Reporting.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District Committee to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, just as for all.
Sorry about that. My dog decided to join us. This meeting is being livestreamed via Zoom. We'll also make it available on our NRSD YouTube website after the fact. So anyone who would want to view it can view it there. So I wanted to make that announcement. Stuff together. So the reason that we're meeting tonight, kind of in between the next two, the next meeting, which was supposed to be on the 19th, is we unfortunately didn't get through all of our business from our last meeting. And a couple of things have come up, as well as the fact that at our next meeting, it is right before the Phillipston Town Meeting, so we don't have a lot of time to conduct all of the business that we need to. Additionally, as I mentioned, we had some information come to us about the American Recovery Plan. We're calling it S R three, that really needed to be addressed sooner rather than later, because some planning needs to happen. So we wanted to address that rather quickly. And we thought, while we had to do that, we would address a couple of the things we didn't get to, so that we wouldn't have to double up on the next agenda and then potentially not get through some of those things again. So with that being said, the first thing I did want to ask is one of the points that we had at our last meeting was the appointment of a school committee member to approve payroll and accounts payable warrants. Mrs. Kozel is currently the one person that is doing that for us. She is not seeking reelection. So I had asked at the last meeting if there was anyone interested or to think about it. And I wanted to put that out there again to see if we might have a volunteer that we could then vote on to be our accounts payable and warrant approver on behalf of the school committee. I'm just going to read again what the law says, that the regional school committee may designate any one of its members for the purpose of signing payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow for the release of checks, provided however that the member shall make available to the board at its next meeting, a record of such actions. This provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of a noncompliance with this section. So do I have anyone who would be interested, at least for the next couple of months, to sign the warrants and AP for payroll and AP? I see Mrs. Mattson has raised her hand, so I thank you for that. So with that being done, I would entertain a motion to appoint Mrs. Mattson to be the designated member of the school committee to sign payroll and accounts payable warrants as per mesh general law 71, section 71, chapter 71, I'm sorry, section 16A. So I have a motion from Mrs. Kozel, seconded by Mrs. Mason. Any questions or comments or concerns? I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Mattson for agreeing. So we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozel?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo? She's muted, sorry.
I am sorry, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that's unanimous. So thank you, Mrs. Mattson, for agreeing to do that. And as I said, as we, once we reorganize, we can perhaps get one of the new members. Or if it gets to be too much, you know, you could just let us know and we'll try to find someone else. But thank you for agreeing. Next up on the agenda is the Program of Studies. We had a nice overview and explanations from Principal Young, as well as Ms. Kalis, on the changes to the Program of Studies and some of the rationale behind it. We did ask for a little extra time. I know, Mrs. Mattson, you wanted to to just be able to review it a little more in depth than you had. So with that being said, I'm going to ask for the motion first, and then we can bring up any questions or comments, once we've got the motion on the floor. So do I have a motion to approve the 2021 to 2022 school year program of studies as presented with the changes?
I'm moved.
I have a move, motion, sorry, by Mrs. Chartier. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Mr. Marx. Any questions or comments? And I'm going to look to you, Mrs. Mattson. I know that you hadn't had a chance to really get into it. Did you come up with any questions that you had on it that you'd like to ask?
Yes, actually, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. I think turning your video off has helped.
Okay. I did send some changes over to Ms. Kalis, and she was going to forward them to Mr. Young. Hopefully, they were helpful.
Were they content or more formatted?
Both.
Okay. I think it would be helpful to know if there's any content changes, what those were, so the rest of the committee would be aware of any changes presented to us. I don't know if you've had those, or if Ms. Kalis, if you had something available there to speak to?
No, I don't know where I put them. I can't find them.
Yeah, maybe Kate, if you wouldn't mind if you've got them there?
Sure. Do you have, can you hear me? Okay. The comments that I got, which were wonderful, thank you, seemed mostly, seemed entirely, you know, grammar corrections, edits of that nature. I'm looking through, I can see them in front of me. I don't really see anything that was programmatic. You know, there was a course number missing, a font.
So there was nothing that would have changed the, the content or details of the courses. It was more, okay.
Yeah, and I had Mr. Young look this over for that purpose, because I know that it is the practice sometimes to vote pending, you know, changes that are, you know, editing changes in nature. And he also looked through it and thought that that's what they were primarily, or entirely, really.
So the motion on the floor is to approve it as it was presented. I think that if we could make maybe a, what is it, a friendly amendment? That would then include the edits that have been presented by Mrs. Mattson. And I think Mrs. Charter, you had made the initial motion, if you would want to amend your motion to include these edits that Mrs. Mattson presented.
I will amend my emotion, my motion to include the edits that Mrs. Mattson has presented.
And I believe Jeff, you were.
I will resecond that, yes.
Okay, so we have an amended motion on the floor to approve the Program of Studies, including the edits that Mrs. Mattson had presented. So any other questions or comments on that Program of Studies? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx?
Aye.
Mrs. Kozel?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that was unanimous. So if you would obviously alert the high school that their Program of Studies has been approved. I know they've been working with a draft to get courses changed for the students next year. So you can let them know that that is now officially approved. And that if there's any other changes that need to be made going forward, to just come back and approach the committee and we can address them then. So thank you, everyone. And if you could also send along the thanks once again to Mr. Young and his team, and to you as well, Kate, for all the work that's gone into kind of revamping the Program of Studies and adding courses as we've needed to, especially with Project Lead the Way classes and some of the other changes that were made. Very good to see that we've put a lot of work into that, and it should definitely help the students, especially as we move forward after our pandemic timeframe. So, thank you. Okay. Next up, we have the American Recovery Plan. I'm actually going to just do a quick reshuffle here and ask if we can do the, the first reading on the policies first, so that we can get that out of the way. And then we'll talk about the American Recovery Plan. And we could do, you know, and take up whatever else we need with that. I think it might make more sense, because we all be a little tired after hearing about some of the things we're going to need to do. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kozel to present the policies that the policy subcommittee had prepared for first reading. And then we'll motion, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion for a vote on those. So Mrs. Kozel?
Okay, most of them are verbiage or quick changes. The first one is ICICA, and it's the School Year School Calendar Policy. And we need to update the language to include scheduling of five snow days. ID is school day also. Updated language to define time when students will be let into the buildings prior to the start of the school day. IE, Organization of Instruction, updated language and updated to reflect configuration with new district changes. IGA, Proposed Update Curriculum Development, and we're just updating language. IGB, Proposed Update Support Service Programs, update language. IGD, Proposed Update Curriculum Adoption, updated language additional, addition of a legal reference. Sometimes we change the guardian to he or she, that, that sort of thing. IHAE, Proposed for Deletion. This is under Physical Education. MASC recommends deletion of this policy since the requirements are included in ADF, in the wellness policy. IHAM, Proposed Update Health Education, update the language and inclusion of research-based in health education program definition. IHB, Proposed Update Special Instruction Programs and Accommodations, Programs for Children with Special Needs, updated language to refer to parents, guardians in place of just parents. So that's what a lot of these have. We've added guardians, etc. IHB E A, Proposed Update English Language Learners, updated language to include parent guardian in place of just parent reference. Formatting changes and updated reference to DESI. JC, Proposed Update Attendance Areas, updated language per MASC recommendation. JCA, Proposed Update Assignment of Students to Schools, updated language per MASC recommendation. JEB, Proposed Update Entrance Age Requirements, updated language and legal reference per MASC recommendation. JF, Proposed Update School Admissions, updated language and legal references and cross-references per MASC recommendation. JICFA, Proposed Update Hazing, Correction of References to Superintendent Should Have Been Principal. JICH, Proposed Update Alcohol Tobacco and Drug Use by Students Prohibited, updated language as recommended by MASC. JIH, Proposed Update Searches and Interrogations, updated language as recommended by MASC. JII, Proposed Update Students Complaints and Grievances, updated language as recommended by MASC. JJJ, Proposed Update Student Organizations, again, updated language as recommended by MASC. JLCC, Proposed Update Communicable Diseases, updated language as recommended by MASC. JRA, Proposed Update Student Record, updated language as recommended by MASC. And the last one, JRD, Proposed Update Student Photographs, update the language as recommended by MASC. So we need a motion to pass these for first reading.
So moved.
We have the motion by Mrs. Trifilo. Do we have a second?
Second.
The second by Mrs. Mattson. Okay, any questions or comments? And I do want to reiterate what Mrs. Kozel said. If you look through all these policies, you're going to find, in a lot of cases, two or three words that have been changed. So even though they sound like there's a lot of policies, there really is not a lot of content that's changing. It's just the words. All right, any, any questions or comments? So seeing none, we will do a roll call to approve the first readings of all of those policies. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozel?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that was unanimous. So we will bring forth for second reading those policies at one of our upcoming meetings. Thank you, Mrs. Kozel, for reading all of those off. And also thank you for leading the policy subcommittee all of these years. It's been a long haul.
No, thank you, Margaret. You really led the policy subcommittee. You know more than I know by far.
Well, you were a good voice in the committee and we will miss you.
Well, thank you.
All right, so what we will do now is we will jump back into the agenda. And we're going to go to the American Recovery Plan, S R three funding. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kazavant, and I'm sure he's going to engage Ms. Geister. What I didn't do in the beginning, and I'm going to, I'm going to do it right now, is I didn't list off who was on the meeting, which I'm supposed to. So I'll apologize for the school committee this evening. We have Mr. Marx, Mrs. Kozel, Mrs. Chartier, Mrs. Robichaud, Mrs. Mattson, Mrs. Trifilo, Mr. Mason, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. We have our superintendent of schools, Dr. Kazavant, our assistant superintendent, Kate Kalis, our business manager, Anne Marie Geister, and our executive administrative assistant, Mrs. Varney. So for the record, I have now listed the names. I apologize for not doing that in advance. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Kazavant for the information he needs to provide us with. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am chair. And thanks to the committee for, you know, bailing themselves for tonight's meeting. Literally, the next, after the meeting last week, we received, Susan, can I share the screen? Is that? No. So literally, the following day, we received, we received guidance from DESI in regards to S R three. And we knew that there were going to be some, you know, some hoops to jump through, etc. But the, you know, approving the, the Program of Studies this evening actually gives us really the permissions to move forward with some of this. So ultimately, I, you know, I'll skip through is quite a bit of language here, but what we'd like is that they have do-nows, which brings me back to my elementary days, but that we need to obviously create an opportunity to consult with stakeholders on district priorities and the uses of S R three. And so below, there's a list of required stakeholders, which I'll show here in a sec. And that's now. The allocations in district application will be made available in late May. So at some point in the next three weeks, we're actually going to receive the application to actually apply for the monies. But, and as you can see, we need to make sure to consider stakeholder feedback, and we have to be able to, to show that. We need to complete the district application and submit it in time for the opening of the grant, which is sometime before October 4th. I know that, I know that we have, I believe, I know that Anne Marie, you must have MasVot tomorrow. So I'm sure that quite a bit of it will, they'll be talking about that quite a bit tomorrow. So I'm sure more information will, will come through. But as you can see, it's, it's a fairly tight timeline when we start talking about the plan. So there's of course webinars, and then within 30 days receipt, we have to do, we have to then post an update to the district return to school plan, which would be probably much like the one we, well, it'll be a lot different, I mean, because we certainly won't be talking about remote, I don't believe. But it'll be talking about how we plan to come back when, in, in August for us. So, and you can see, there's some of these regulations. So right now, where we're at is we now have the Program of Studies, which is key, because now we can move forward with some of the plans. I'm going to stop sharing unless somebody really wants to see that. We're going to stop share, stop sharing. We're going to start the plan. We've already started posting many of these positions. And the reason why we're, we need to move on this quickly is that we've made preliminary plans to unlink the high school and the middle school schedule, which really, really only boils down to one staff member when we, when we start making some changes. You know, so that way, the middle school and the high school can literally kind of work on its own, because it won't be, it won't be dependent on each other. And that's going to help us do several things. So without really having the actual paper plan, which I plan to present, I don't know if that will have time. It'll be ready by next week. I'm not sure if we can, I'll actually be able to present it, depending on what we have. But we've, we've created opportunities through the Unified Arts Cycle. So if you remember last week, I was in, in explaining music. That was a part, just one small piece of the plan that we were going to put in, we're going to put in place in order to do a lot of things, but one is remediation. So within the school day, create opportunities through the Unified Arts Cycle. So if you have your typical, at the middle school, arts, PE, music, etc., then we're going to add, and they're Spanish, but we're going to add reading, and we're going to add a science. So there will be a total of seven, Anne Marie, or eight Unified Arts. I believe it's seven. And what that'll allow us to do in those areas of remediation, which will be science and reading, that'll allow us to keep those groups very, very small. Because we, we need to keep them small, because they're, it's really about working on, on gaps in learning. So from the middle school perspective, we, you know, we're, we're fairly complete in that. And we have the reading specialist identified to be somebody internal. We've had to make some staff changes and moves. The science position, Kate, I believe that's an actual going to be a higher, or these are all interim hires, by the way, utilizing S R three. But was that an internal move, or is that a higher?
I believe that's a higher.
Yeah.
At the middle school?
Yeah, it's a higher.
Yep, that's what, okay, thank you. So at the high school, well, the high school doesn't work around the same type of schedule. It doesn't rotate like that. So we had to find opportunities in order to do some credit recovery. And by doing, by uncoupling the, the two schedules, there'll be some opportunities, especially in the area of science and math, we believe, where, let's just take a typical five-block schedule for a math teacher. There's a very good, very good possibility that two blocks of those, of that five, okay, the standard five, let's say Mrs. Hemlin, for example, that, that two of those blocks would be, we'd be able to utilize them as remediation. So, so someone who may or may not, well, may, did not pass math the year previous. And so it's really about critical recovery during the actual school day, because one way or another, we're going to have to try to, you know, give those kids the opportunity to do so. So, so that is just, again, and I didn't even touch upon the elementary at this point in time, because that is a, that's a whole other, you know, nuanced conversation, which without some type of graphic would be almost impossible to, to explain. So this was a great first step, what happened today, because now this solidifies the, the Program of Studies. Done. And the work of scheduling, and I have our administrative meeting tomorrow, and if not every second of it, close to every second of it, will be dedicated to creating these opportunities. And we have some, we're working collaboratively, or we're, we're in discussions with our neighbors, neighboring districts to offer summer school, traditional summer school, if you have, maybe did not, you didn't pass. In that way, if we, if we join in with Quabbin, Gardner, Winchon, and Ash West, I'm forgetting somebody, I know I am, utilizing those teachers that will be able to offer maybe some opportunity either through, through the computer platform, through remote, thank you, remote platform, be able to make up some of those, some of the classes that have been missed, and we'll be utilizing more teachers to do that. Because we don't think we're going to get, we need, we don't have enough teachers in some cases, and we'd like to diversify those classes as much as possible. All utilizing S R three monies, S R three monies. So this was a huge step. We need to create and to reach out to stakeholders. And it ultimately, the stakeholder groups, it was on that list, wasn't it, Anne Marie? I want to give you a quick, we're going to be putting out some information here, but I don't remember if I, that I.
Scroll down to, I think it's page two. Yeah, it's a paragraph.
Ah, here we go. Sorry, I went right by it. So the stakeholders must include. So they're not giving a lot of area for creativity, but obviously, students, families, school district administrators, teachers, principals, educators, school staff, the unions, civil rights organizations, stakeholders representing the interest of children with disabilities, English language, children experiencing homelessness. So there's quite of, there's quite of a group, an array of folks that need to be part of that. And then the maintenance of equity really is, you know, something that Anne Marie will spend sleepless nights worrying about in terms of reporting, but we have some plans, we have some ways to probably hopefully simplify, simplify those, those, those issues. So what I hope to have in a draft form for folks next week is the basic plan. And of just staffing, oops. And what we want to do from there is then, then we'll, by that point, hopefully, have put word out to those stakeholder groups to, to start calling out some, the, the ideas and needs from the community at large. And that, of course, will span K through 12. So we'll have to, you know, it'll be a fairly, it'll look a lot like our groups that we used in order to return to school this fall. But in any event, that's, that's where we're really starting to speed up process starting tomorrow. And so there'll be a lot of, we'll be pushing out a lot of information at that point.
Dr. Kazavant, what type of support do you need right now from the committee, or do you see going forward? I know you've got to get your stakeholder group together. Do you want some representation from the committee? And what other things do we need to do for you?
So absolutely. So I, you know, well, we'll certainly need current school committee members. And I know that some former school committee members would fit nicely in the role of, say, parents, or, I don't know, you know, community stakeholder. I think that'd be fantastic. But we'll put the, we'll put that information out there. And really, at this point, just, just for us posting so early and getting these, again, people are going to say, well, you're already creating the plan. We're really not. We're creating the, you know, really the structure in which to then, to move, to move in whatever direction that we think we need to move. We've, we've heard from the community already about summer. You know, short of the two summer, I'm going to call them schools, right? So there's the extended year, which, which really is dedicated for students on IEPs who, that in their IEPs require an extended year. And there's also going to be summer programming for student, for, obviously, for students to hopefully negate some of the loss, you know, of instruction that, that happened during the pandemic. So there's, but again, what people really are asking for is more of a, a summer programming thing. We're just not going to be able to, and we've, you know, those restrictions are pretty, are still pretty tight. They're very, very, very tight right now, even if we were to have it, but we're not going to have the space, given that we're going to be utilizing the space that we have, probably either for credit recovery at the high school, or the, the summer programming that I've just, that I just described. I'm at the elementary and middle school. So they're just, they're just not going to be much of an opportunity, I don't think. But we are, we do hear, we do hear folks, we do hear them. It's just going to be very hard to, to offer that. Now, the state has said that they're going to put 70,000, 70,000, 70 million dollars towards that effort. I'm going to look to either Anne Marie or Kate. I have not read anything this week on, you know, and we did get a commissioner's update today, but I didn't see anything that said, okay, start applying, or what are the, you know, what are the parameters around that?
I haven't seen anything yet either.
So that's really the update. And again, we, I think we'll have to make a game time decision whether or not folks have the time to review. And again, we, I think we'll have to make a game time decision whether or not folks have the time to review at the next school committee meeting prior to the Phillipston Town meeting. I think that, but I certainly will send it out, we'll, we'll add it as part of the, as the agenda, so folks can review. And if we don't get to it, you know, at least it's, at least that folks will have it.
Thank you, thank you for that update. It, it took them quite some time to send that information out and, and it's still really vague. So, but I think the, the key part then is really the stakeholder group that needs to be heard. And I think you said it right, you've kind of, we need the framework for which that stakeholder group can operate in. I think that, you know, we're, it isn't a cart or a horse, they're kind of at the same speed together. We're together, so.
We're creating the schedule in which then to, you know, hopefully meet the needs of, of course, of all of our kids. But, but the stakeholders will have some, will definitely have some say in that. But we need to, we need to get the staff in order to be, to staff the schedule so that it actually can, it can work. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to let Kate give this really good news about Project Lead the Way, because the best thing about being the superintendent is that you, you get, you get to take credit for all the great things that happen. And you actually have very little to do with that. And so that's just the best part of it. But I have to, I have to let Kate have her cake and eat it too, because she has been the driving force behind Project Lead the Way. And we received probably the best, best news that we could possibly receive. So Kate, we, if you, I don't know if you're, how your connection is, but if you could let them know.
I'm good. So we received a grant for the high school for, to add biomedical science to our pathway. And the grant we received was $75,000, which is the highest grant you can have for a high school. And I think, you know, given the fact that there are high schools out there that are much larger than ours, that's quite great accomplishment. And thanks to the teachers and the prince, the admin at the high school, as well as the guidance department, who really have helped us to make this program the success that it is. So I know Mrs. Duplessis is looking forward to taking the training to add, to teach the first biomedical science course. When we looked at the program studies last time, I mentioned, you know, contingent on grant funding. Well, it's come through and we did very well. And I think I added it up for Dr. Kazavant, who likes to keep his finger on the tab there. And at this point, we've received over $170,000 in grants for Project Lead the Way.
It's definitely for bragging rights. It's only really for bragging rights when I finally get around to other people, other super. So, you know, but thanks, yeah.
So there's a, there's a convening tomorrow for all new grant recipients. And they've asked us to be on the panel, answering questions. So, you know, we're, we're becoming old hat at this, so that's really great. I'm, I'm very excited they gave us what we asked for.
And another great piece of news, if I may, then, you know, you know, we can only have so much good news at one time, for gosh sakes. But the Department of Ed asked, because when they came through and did their evaluation during the winter for, you know, I believe it was civil rights and can't think of the other area, but they, they recognized the work that we were doing in terms of social, emotional, you know, health of our students. And we're, we're honestly, matter of fact, they used the word exemplary, although they didn't put it in the report. But he did say that truly the kind of the system that we have set up at this point really is when you put it against any, any district, large or small, is, is, is as good, if not better than theirs. And that's, that's a quote, because I wrote it down, I made him repeat it three times. That way, you know, I could, again, use that. But they were, our, so our, so Ashley Nigle and I believe Caitlin Patnow, who's the, both a school psychologist, they were actually invited. They didn't ask, they were invited by the Department of Ed to host a training last Friday, which is, you know, first off, it's, it's an honor and, but it really just speaks to the, the quality of, you know, of folks that we have here. And really their, their dedication to what they, they value. And we're starting to see, we're starting to see those, those sprouts of all the hard work, you know, two, three years ago, now start to kind of bloom. So it's been, it was, it was an exciting week in terms of for now, you know, for, for Narragansett. And we're going to be doing a press release for the Project Lead the Way. And, but again, why not have some good news every once in a while? So those are two great things.
It's excellent. Congratulations on, on the grant and as well as that feedback from the state. And I think next year, we'll need to incorporate, I, I know that we had Ashley come and speak about the social, emotional piece. So I look forward to more of an update on that. And I think it'd be great to, at some point, maybe to feature Project Lead the Way at one of our meetings and kind of lay out, yeah, what, what we're doing and maybe get some of the teachers or students or something to speak as well. Because this is just, you know, I know you've said it a lot, and I don't remember the exact number of schools that are involved. But, you know, we're, we're one of the, at the forefront of this. And it's very exciting to be there, especially as you mentioned, with being as small as we are as a district, to have this type of grant funding come in and these opportunities for our kids is just fabulous. So thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add, I mentioned that to Dr. Kazavant this morning, that, you know, it's, it's really time for us to do, to have some of the people involved come and do a showcase of Project Lead the Way. And, you know, they recognized us over the last few months for 100% access in our district, district wide, and 100% participation at middle school. They gave us two other smaller grants this week totaling a little over $5,000. They're called sustainability grants for our current engineering and computer science courses. So I, I agree, I think, you know, that would be great to get out there. And we are doing a press release, as Dr. Kazavant said.
Yeah, you know, I, it's with COVID and everything, not being able to meet in person. I miss the days where we could do a showcase fair where the students and even the teachers and the district as a whole can kind of get out there and show the community what we're doing. You know, I just remember when my son was in elementary school, the, the science fair over at Phillipston was, was wonderful. And I'm sure they did the same over in Templeton. And it, I miss those things. So hopefully next year, we might be able to have the opportunity to maybe do it in person as well. So that could be exciting. So it's great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll go back to the, the S R three slash A R P, whatever we're calling it, American Recovery Plan monies. Does anyone have any questions on that? Or, and I will just move on to school committee comments. Does anybody in the school committee have any comments they'd like to say? Okay, seeing none, I'm just going to do another thank you to Mrs. Kojal, Mrs. Tripolo, and Mrs. Chartier for their service. Because now this is officially, I believe, the last meeting that they will be attending as school committee members. So as I said last week, you know, thank you for your service and dedication to the district. You will be missed, but we will definitely be tapping into your knowledge and expertise when we feel the need. As Dr. Kazavant already said, there might be some initial need coming up real soon. So maybe hearing from us.
I nominate Deb. Thanks. I'm game.
Great, well, keep that in mind. So again, thank you to the three of you for, for all your years of service. And as I said, personally, for me, you were all three wonderful mentors when I joined the committee. So I will personally miss you, but I know where to find you, so. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to say? Okay, seeing none, we had no other items come up within 48 hours that we need to go over today. And you just want to announce that our next meeting will be next Wednesday, the 19th. We will start at 5:30 to give, in case any of our new members have some issues with getting to a five o'clock meeting. So we'll make the start time at 5:30. And let's see, I put on here, and just in case anything came up to do executive session, which we do not need. So we will not be going into executive session. And with that, if nobody has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
From Mrs. Kojal and a second from Mrs. Chartier. Tripolo, I thought you might jump in on that one, just to, you know, to, to make a final motion there. We will do roll call vote. Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Aye.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tripolo?
Yes.
Mr. Mason? And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So again, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, especially in this little ad hoc meeting. And best of luck to Mrs. Tripolo, Mrs. Kojal, and Mrs. Chartier. And this meeting is now adjourned, so good night, everyone.
Bye, everyone, thank you.
Bye.